Stockpile expansion at CCI's Tilden Mine, and that's in Tilden Township, Marquette County. My name is Ryan Blazek. I'm with Eagles Environmental Support Division. I'm just going to be moderating the hearing tonight. But before we get started, I just have a couple of things I need to go through. First off, we're going to take a look at our agenda. So this is what our agenda is going to look like. First, we're going to start off with the introduction. That's what we're doing right now. A big thing to keep in mind is there's actually going to be two parts to the public hearing tonight. We're going to start off with an informational session where Eagle is going to introduce and talk about the application they received. And then we're going to follow that up with a question and answer session where you'll have an opportunity to ask a question on Eagle's process and the application that was received. And that'll go until either 6:30 or until we get through all the questions. And then after that, we're going to go through the ways to submit an official comment. And then we'll actually go into the actual hearing portion, and that's where everybody's going to have an opportunity to make a statement for the record on this application that was received. And then we're also going to cover who to contact in case we're for the questions. All right. In case you haven't joined us for one of these online public hearings, all lines are going to be muted during the hearing. So you'll be able to hear us. People won't hear you until it's time to unmute you. And we'll talk about how we're going to do that in a little bit for the Q and A session and to make your statements. But you can submit your questions anytime using the Q and A box in the Zoom toolbar, in case you're having any difficulties with Zoom or have any issues that you need to contact us about. And then also, just so you are aware, we are recording this hearing, so it will be recorded and it will be put on Eagle's YouTube channel in a couple of days. So you can revisit it then, or feel free to forward it on if you need to. All right. At this time, I would like to have our Eagle staff involved in this application to turn their cameras and mics on and introduce themselves.
All right. Thanks, Ryan. My name is Hunter King. I'm an environmental quality analyst out of the Marquette District Office, and I will be your hearings officer this evening.
Right? You're there, Ryan? I think Ryan was having some difficulties with this.
I am here. I'm having some difficulties getting the camera to turn on. I apologize for that. This is Ryan Mccone with Eagle Water Resources Division here in the Marquette District. I'm the district supervisor for the resource unit.
All right. Thank you, Ryan and Hunter. All right. Now I do have a few slides that were submitted with the application. I think Hunter was going to say a few words about that.
Yeah, nice. Definitely. Thank you. Yeah, tonight, we're here to have a public hearing on the proposed 303-acre expansion of Cleveland Cliffs Irons Tilden Mine Stockpile. It's an existing stockpile located on the northwest quadrant of the Tilden Mine area there on the map or the upper left quadrant. Ryan, if you want to hit the next slide. Here it is zoomed in. There'll be an estimated 544 million long tons of rock hauled and placed in the area within the yellow boundaries there. And this activity will impact state-regulated wetlands and streams. So yeah.
All right. Thanks for that introduction, Hunter. All right, we're going to move right into kind of a question and answer session where some of our Eagle staff are going to turn their cameras on if we can. I know Ryan's having an issue. And we're going to have kind of Q and A. So this is your opportunity to ask a question on this application. If you want to make a statement, you're going to hold on to those statements, and we'll do that in the hearing portion that we're going to do a little bit later. But if you do have a question, you can basically type it in the Q and A box that you'll see at the bottom of your screen in Zoom. Just go ahead and type that in, send it to us, or you can click your raised hand icon at the bottom of your screen. So that will raise your hand in Zoom, and then I can call on you and you can ask your question verbally. And I'll kind of go back and forth between the Q and A box and the raised hands if we have a lot of questions. And then if there are people who are on the phone listening, you can also raise your hand in Zoom by selecting pound two. And what we'll do is we'll call on you using the last four digits of your phone number and unmute you. And you'll have an opportunity then to mute yourself or unmute yourself rather. Now, are there, I guess, are there any questions for this part of the hearing that our Eagle staff would be able to answer? And just mention that if we don't get very many questions, what we can do is move on to the next part of the hearing. All right, let's see here. I did have a question pop up. All right. Does the mining applications, mining companies application, application document the presence of a nesting bald eagle? Well, Hunter, if you're able to mention if that's in the application or not.
Um, I was not, I did not see it in the application now.
No, I don't believe there's no nesting pairs there. That's my understanding.
All right. So I'm going to read this question, and I guess it relates in how the comments are used for this hearing. Why is this not just lip service? Were you, where are you checking the box for we listened to the public, but then public input doesn't actually matter? Question mark. Can't help feel but feel like a foregone conclusion. Because money over the environment and corpse or core or citizens?
I'll be happy to take that one, Ryan and Hunter. So the, the frank answer is as we apply the law as it's written. And an important part of that law, both when the laws are written and then obviously when they're administered like now is is public input to them. We do take public comment very seriously. So we have these hearings, and we appreciate people taking the time to to share their knowledge and their, their interest and their concerns with us. Where I suspect some folks may feel like it's lip service has to do with the criteria within these statutes that we administer. There are specific criteria under which we need to determine if a project is legal or not. And that's, that's a lot different than whether you like a project or not, or whether you like an industry or not. The question is, under those laws, is what's being proposed legal or not? And so while we're, we're happy to listen to folks' comments, those that are pertinent and substantive that apply to statutes at hand are the ones that generally carry the most weight. And so I hope folks on the line can understand that, you know, we do take comments very seriously. Part of our job is to take the comments received and determine which ones are something that need to be further scrutinized or looked into based on the criteria of the statutes at hand. And in this case, it's parts 31, 301, and 303.
Yeah, thank you, Ryan. And I think there's also some mention in the hearing statement when we read it. You know, as far as what we can, what is taken into consideration under the, the statute, if I recall.
Yeah, can I add one more thing? It's, it's these applications or use, it's, it's not a popularity contest, and it's, it has nothing to do with, you know, big money or little money, anything like that. So again, it goes back to the criteria of the statutes.
All right. Thanks for that addition, Ryan. Next question, although Cleveland Cliffs owns an adjacent national mine site, areas on that partial were not considered in the proposal as a potential dump site. Why not?
I can go ahead and take that. So the areas that were outlined in the application were the most feasible for their economics. You can hop on if you'd like, Ryan.
Sure. And that's something we've asked a lot about anytime you've got a project where you're basically looking for an area to, to store material. The, the, it's an obvious question is why can't you do it somewhere else? And we, we do ask those questions quite, quite frequently. The, the, the matter at hand has to do with whether or not the, the Tilden Mine Company can be profitable if it's, if it's worth the investment in moving the material that far, or if that would basically make it a non-feasible project from a financial standpoint. So we do take into consideration, you know, cost considerations like that. And it's, it's a, it's, it's not black, white, cut and dry. It's, you know, you can, you can invest so much money in order to produce so much ore. And if the amount you need to invest doesn't provide what you need to, to break even, then obviously it's not a feasible project. So the further they have to haul material, whether that's horizontally or vertically, the, the more it costs, the more fuel it costs, people hours it, it takes. And so when it comes to off-site or remote disposal locations, that's another consideration we had to take.
All right. Thank you both. I have a trio of questions, kind of in follow-up to the bald eagle question, and I'm just, I'm going to read these because they all kind of go together but are a little different. So one question is, just to clarify, Ryan, Eagle has confirmed there are no nesting eagles within the impacted area, or does application materials submitted to Eagle state there are no nesting eagles? So that's the first part. And then I've got a question that, that asks, is Eagle aware there are adjacent landowners have photographed the bald eagle nest on the site? Or where, yeah, on the, on the site, proposed stockpile expansion? And then is Eagle aware that federal regulations do not just apply nesting pairs, but to any disturbance of a wild eagle's nest? And then the third part, and I can break these up too. In terms of eagles, was there a mammal or bird survey completed, as would be done in the EIA?
So this is not in EIA, and so it's not, not exactly the same protocol. We do, one of the first steps in an application view is to look for areas that are flagged for known threatened endangered species. And obviously, bald and golden eagles have their own separate law that covers them as well. Off the top of my head, I don't recall there being a breeding pair, but that's something we can take a look at, make sure I'm correcting that matter. But in terms of a species, you know, such as eagles, yeah, we need to take that into consideration in terms of both their presence or lack thereof, as well as what the, the project would actually have an impact to for that.
All right. Thanks, Ryan. I hope that answers the, those questions on the eagles. Let's see here. All right. Isn't it, so isn't it time for a comprehensive cumulative impact statement to be done that includes all connected actions? Permits for all aspects of the two adjacent mining sites that have been mined for nearly 200 years? I'm not sure if that's rhetorical, or if you can speak at all to.
Yeah, I can speak to that. There is a cumulative impact assessment that has taken place and is part of the public notice. I'll say Kathleen wrote that. I'd be happy to provide that information to you if you'd like to email me after this.
And I should mention, we are going to list Hunter's contact information at the end. Are Tilden and Empire's impacts calculated separately and issued separate permits when they are both adjacent to each other and owned and operated by the same company?
Uh, no, the, the wetland mitigation aspect of the Tilden project, the process that we're discussing now, and their mitigation bank credits at the Republic Wetland Preserve are both combined and considered to be, you know, part of what we consider almost the same project. So they are considered together, the, the two projects. Now, again, that's also located in the application. Be happy to pass that information along if you so request it.
All right. Thank you. Doesn't three, the 303 administrative code make it clear that additional alternatives can be considered? And economics are not the only or primary consideration in part 301?
Yeah, economics is definitely not the only or even the primary consideration under 301 or 303 that, that is correct. And it's part of the current application. The documents submitted include, I believe, at least six different alternatives that were considered and, and provides the kind of, you know, positives, negatives, or cost benefits. Everyone will get it of those alternatives. And so that is definitely something that has occurred in this process and, and is a standard portion of these reviews.
Thank you. Um, let's see here. So this is kind of going back to the eagles. Given the difference of opinion on the bald eagle presence, how will Eagle confirm they will not be impacted on the site?
That's a great question. So another thing to keep in mind, we, we've had the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and Michigan DNR involved in this project, project prior to now. It's also going to be a federally reviewed file, which means U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service will, if they have comments or concerns, will, will be providing those, and something we are required to take into consideration. So it's, it's definitely not a, a matter that's, you know, done being considered or dealt with. It's, it's an ongoing issue, and that's, that's the eagles, as well as any other concern U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service may have.
All right. Thanks, Ryan. And then a kind of follow-up, just, just to confirm, so no mammal or bird survey under the joint permit? Like, I'm assuming that means was submitted.
For eagles? No, there was surveys done for bats. That was done last summer.
And, and part of all of our joint applica, joint permit applications, we screen for threatened endangered species.
All right. Thank you. How has Eagle assessed the cumulative impacts from mining in the region? Both from the standpoint of the cumulative impacts of mining in the Western Great Lakes Basin, as well as the cumulative impacts and associated connected action from the Tilden Empire Mining Complex, which has experienced incremental site expansion?
Did you read that again, Ryan?
Yeah, no problem. How has Eagle assessed the cumulative impacts from mining in the region? Both from a standpoint of the cumulative impacts of mining in the Western Great Lakes Basin, as well as a cumulative impacts and associated connected action from the Tilden Empire Mining Complex, which has experienced incremental site expansion?
I'll take a first stab at that one, Hunter, if you want. The Senator mentioned how we do require and close has provided, you know, a cumulative assessment of their impacts dating back to, I believe, part of 1987. And cumulative impacts is something we look at on a, on a project-specific, you know, basis. And so in this, in this case, you know, CCI's presence, whether it's Empire or Tilden, we're, we're looking at those, we, we take those into consideration every time a new application comes in. So it's, it's a cumulative kind of growing process. In terms of beyond the project on a region-wide basis of a Western UP, you know, obviously there are cumulative impacts that are shared between different mining projects. And that's something, if, if there's a specific means by which, you know, those impacts could be, you know, looked at or dealt with in a specific way on a, on a region-wide basis, that's something we would consider. It's typically based on a project or a location though. So when we get an application in, we are looking at the project as proposed within the footprint proposed. And then in terms of cumulative impacts, you know, impacts to that area that have occurred, have occurred to date, or that are, you know, likely to occur in the future. And that is, that's largely within the, the project footprint, and then the areas, you know, immediately around the project.
All right. No, thanks, Ryan. And again, if anyone on the phone is calling in, you can ask a question if you like by selecting pound two, and that will raise your hand in Zoom, and we can call on you. This is kind of a follow-up to that cumulative impact assessment that was mentioned. It says the cumulative impact assessment is only a 28-page update to a file that is not found in my enviro? Question mark?
Uh, it's in my enviro.
Okay. And I should also mention that we did put the link to the permit application documents in the chat for everyone logged on.
Hey, hi, everybody. This is Kyle Alexander, field operations manager at WRD. We actually have Ann Garwood on the line with us right now, and I thought it might be helpful for her to quickly put in a, a couple of words on cumulative impacts, since there's quite a few questions that are coming in the chat about that.
Sure. Hi, guys. Thank you. I'm Ann Garwood in Water Resources Division, out of the NSYNC Central. So yeah, in our program, we do consider cumulative impacts. Cumulative impacts are typically at the watershed scale and not at a larger scale than that. And that comes a lot from our administrative rules in part 303 and the statute itself. So typically, we're talking about within the watershed. And there's a couple of different ways that we do it on our end, and then a couple of different places where applicants provide additional information. So on our end, we have historic wetland mapping that we look at, as well as aerial photography and things like that. And then applicants are required to address cumulative impacts in their application materials. And in this case, it was one of the things that we asked them to expand on, and so they provided supplemental documentation as part of the application process, and that's why it's that additional document in my enviro. And it's still under review at this point in time.
Thanks, Ann.
Yeah, thank you. Next question I want to read is although the company has provided several options for stockpile expansion, should we assume that those are the only options? Could there be options that they have not considered and Eagle review those possibilities? Especially considering those could be per subsection four of section 303, feasible and prudent alternatives?
Certainly. There, there's, there's no cap. I mean, there can be infinite number of alternatives. We try to limit that, obviously, to those that, that are realistic. But, uh, you know, this public hearing, we're, we're here to listen. If folks have alternatives that they would like to put forth for consideration, this is the time to do it. And so while the number is limited to what's been considered so far, this is the opportunity, if you've got, you know, specific alternatives you'd like to propose, we'd like to hear them.
All right. Thanks, Ryan. And it does look like we have a raised hand, so we're going to go ahead and call on Robin LaChappelle. So Robin, we're going to unmute you, and then you can unmute yourself and ask your question. Should be able to unmute your, if, there you go. Right there?
I'm here.
All right. We can hear you. Feel free to ask your question, Robin.
Hi, I've been photographing the eagles in the area for more than 15 years. My last photo of the nesting pair was on February 4th, 2024. This is on the shore of Grass Lake. South shore.
Okay. Do you have, do you have a question, Robin? If you have any additional information or statement or comment or something that'll be helpful for us, I guess I'd recommend holding that for the hearing part, where everyone's going to get a, a chance to provide us with information.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
And, and that there's eagles in the area is, is to be expected. I mean, it's, thankfully, it's, you'll be, we have eagles in many places. So I appreciate that specific information.
All right. Thank you. And so the question was, where in my enviro? Where, where in the cumulative impacts document, where is the cumulative impacts document my enviro?
Appendix B.
I have some question here on, you know, the, the reason behind the contamin, making contaminated sites and wetland mitigation. Well, here's one. When new wetland mitigation, when a new wetland mitigation site is created, are, are the organisms from the original wetlands transported to the new site, or do they all dive beneath the waste pile? So I guess the question is related to organisms. If this project was permitted. Anything you can?
So in general terms, the mitigation, probably a mitigation is, let me take a step back. There's multiple different, or multiple avenues by which mitigation can occur. Everything from creation to restoration to preservation. In terms of this application, the wetlands that are being put forth as mitigation were created in an area that had previously been a mining operation. And that creation happened many years ago, back in the 1990s, if I recall. So they're established wetlands. The organisms that are there are already there. That would be a little different if we were starting from scratch, you know, and creating a whole new mitigation site. But in this case, the area being put forth as, as mitigation already exists. It's already developed into a functioning wetland.
All right. Thanks, Ryan. And let's see here. I think we got to, we've gotten to all the questions in here, at least touched on them.
Brian, I'm going to speak to, there are a few more questions about alternatives analysis and the alternatives that the applicant provided. I just wanted to kind of clarify to everyone on the, the call that, at, at the end of the day, Eagle staff, so Ryan, Hunter, we are the ones who will determine if an alternatives analysis is acceptable or not. The alternatives analysis provided by the applicant is the, you know, the applicant's best take on what they think are prudent and feasible alternatives. But that's for us to evaluate in that process as I'm going. It's not, we haven't reached a conclusion on that yet. So if folks want to submit comments to Hunter, to Ryan about alternatives, you know, we're happy to review those and take those into consideration.
Yeah, thanks for that follow-up, Kyle. And I think we're at about 6:30, so I think that'll be a good segue into the next part of the hearing tonight. Thank you all for your questions and to our panel for taking the time to answer those. All right. Looks like we have one person just raised their hand. So we're going to call on Noah. We'll allow you to unmute yourself and ask your question, and then we're going to have to move on. So Noah, it looks like you're unmuted on our end. You can unmute yourself and ask your question.
Oui, Noah Saperstein, indigenous cause, wavya tenong and dunjibla, gichiwe kwaydanginda, gavins kwabikong and denoki. My name's Noah Saperstein. I've interacted with some of y'all at Eagle before. I'm the environmental justice specialist for Gavins Kwabikong. I guess I'm seeking clarification on where the 2000 cumulative impact assessment that was produced by Cleveland Cliffs is on my enviro? Hearing that it's publicly available is extremely surprising to me, knowing the hurdles that I, as a tribal staff, had to go to to get access to it. So I'm requesting additional information or a link from my enviro to the participants of this for that transparency piece, because allegedly it's available to the public. Me gwatch.
Hunter or Ryan, would you be able to comment on that?
It, it is publicly available. Everything in my waters. You know, it's public facing, should be. Hunter, do you have any more specifics on that?
Yeah, I mean, kind of just bump, or, you know, going off of what Ryan Mccone said, yeah, it should be right there in the public, public eye in my enviro portal. I'd be happy to provide links to that as need be.
All right. And again, I'll, I'll provide Hunter's contact info at the end here.
Be put into the chat box? It seems like that's a chat box that Eagle has access to for one-way communication.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Yeah, if, yeah, we would have to find it as well during, while we're performing the hearing here. So I'm not sure we'll be able to find it by the end of the hearing, since we'll be listening to comments. But we did provide the, the primary link to my enviro. But we could, I'm sure we could do some follow-up, and I'll be providing Hunter's contact info. Thank you. All right. We'll be moving on to the next part of the hearing tonight. We're going to go through the other ways to submit an official comment. In case you didn't want to make a comment tonight verbally, there are some other ways you can do that. You can do that through my enviro, which we've been talking about tonight. And that's through submission HPYGN8DM4Y1Z. And this link is going to be put into the chat, and so you'll be able to see the link and make your comment. Or especially for the people on the phone, by mail to Hunter King at the Eagle Marquette District Office, one five zero four West Washington Street, and that's Marquette, Michigan, four nine eight five five. Obviously, anyone who is on the phone can also make a comment through mine viro. And the comment period after today will be open for ten days, which will be March ninth, twenty twenty-four. All right, so now we're going to move into the public hearing portion where everyone will have a chance to make a comment and a statement on this application. And so to start with that off, Hunter, it'd be great if you could read the opening statement for us.
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Hunter King. I'm the Marquette District Representative for Michigan Eagle in the Water Resource Division. I'll be serving as the hearings officer for the public hearing tonight regarding permit application H P Y G N eight D M four Y one Z. Tonight with me is Ryan McCone. As he stated earlier, he's the district supervisor for the Water Resources Division and the Water Resources Unit. Also with us tonight is Jay Parent, who is the Marquette District Supervisor for the Water Resources Division in the Water Quality Unit. To describe how tonight's hearing will function, I'll begin by providing some background information regarding the reason for the hearing. I will then describe the purpose of the hearing and how your comments will be used by Eagle. Following that, I will outline the procedures under which your comments may be submitted and described. And describe the anticipated next steps following tonight's hearings. Finally, you will have an opportunity to provide hearing comments to Eagle. Following the hearing, I will conclude with a closing statement. Here's a little background information. Eagles Water Resource Division is responsible for administering administering a variety of environmental programs intended to protect inland lakes, streams, wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes, and the Great Lakes. These programs regulate certain activities such as dredging or filling of a lake, stream, or wetland, construction of a dam, construction of a marina, placing shore protection or constructing docks, and building in designated critical sand dune areas. The law governing those responsibilities is the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act of nineteen ninety-four or Public Act four fifty-one as amended Act four fifty-one. Tonight's public hearing is being held as part of Eagle's review of Tilden Mining Company's proposed expansion of the iron ore operations at the Tilden Mine to extend the life of that mine. Expanding the Tilden Mine pit will necessitate increasing the rock style footprint of three hundred three, or will increase the rock pile footprint three hundred three acres. This undertaking will permanently fill thirty-two point four acres of emergent wetland, nineteen point two acres of forested wetland, and twenty-six point three acres of scrub shrub wetlands. Mitigation for the seventy-seven point nine total acres of wetland impact is proposed using existing mitigation credits as the established Republic Wetland Preserve. Proposed rock stockpile expansion would also permanently fill four thousand six hundred sixty-one linear feet of headwater streams of the Escanawha River watershed. The applicant proposes to mitigate those stream impacts by restoring twelve thousand five hundred fifty-one linear feet of stream offsite, but within the same watershed. The proposed stream mitigation construction would temporarily impact seventeen point four acres of wetland, and as proposed, convert emergent wetland types to scrub shrub and forested wetland. Here's the purpose of the public hearing. In order for a permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activities described in the public notice meet certain statutory criteria set forth by the Floodplain Authority of Part Thirty-one Water Resource Protection, Part Three oh one Inland Lakes and Streams, and Part Three oh three Wetlands Protection of NARIPA or the Natural Resource and Environmental Protection Act, Public Act four fifty-one. In general, Eagle is required to consider the anticipated impacts and effects of the proposed projects on streams and wetlands held in public trust. When reviewing an application for a permit under the provisions of Part Three oh one Inland Lakes and Streams of Act four fifty-one, Eagle is charged with the considerations required by Section three oh one oh six of Part Three oh one. Specifically, the department shall issue a permit if it finds that the project will not adversely affect the public trust or riparian rights. Or the department shall not grant a permit if the proposed activity will unlawfully impair or destroy any of the waters or other natural resources of the state. When reviewing a permit application under the authority of Part Three oh three Wetlands Protection of Act four fifty-one, Eagle is charged with considering or with the considerations required by Section three oh three eleven of Part Three oh three. Namely, a permit authorizing an activity listed in Section three oh three oh four shall not be approved by Eagle unless the department determines that the permit issuance is in the public interest, is necessary to realize the benefits derived from the activity, and is otherwise lawful. Specifically, a permit shall not be issued unless it is shown that unacceptable disruption will not result to the aquatic resources. Or a permit shall not be issued unless the applicant shows either of the following. Option one, the proposed activity is primarily dependent upon being located in a regulated wetland. Or option two, a feasible and prudent alternative does not exist. Tonight's public hearing is an opportunity for the public to provide comment and information that Eagle will consider and may be used in deciding whether or not a permit can be issued. Please recognize that Eagle can only consider information you provide if the information returns to the project review criteria that Eagle is required to follow when making permitting decisions. Some of you may want to simply express your support or opposition to the project. We will be happy to make note of your position, but it's important to understand that Eagle is by law, Eagle cannot by law base our decision on whether or not there's widespread support or opposition to the project. For the procedural part of it, before outlining the procedures or for collecting your comments, I do need to mention that this notice of hearing was published in the Mining Journal on Saturday, February seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. As we discussed at the beginning of the informational session, if you have a comment to provide, please raise your hand in the Zoom toolbar to ensure that the hearing is conducted in a fair and equitable manner. After I'm finished speaking, we will follow these steps. We will first call on those who indicated in the registration that they would like to speak. After that, we will call on those that raised their hand in Zoom in the Zoom toolbar indicating they would like to make a comment. As a reminder, if you are participating in this hearing via telephone, follow the direction of the moderator on how to identify that you would like to make a comment. You can also, again, submit your comments by writing to the, to Eagle, my viro portal via email or via US mail to me, Hunter King, at the Water Resource Division. Eagle, Marquette District Office, fifteen zero four West Washington Street, Marquette, Michigan, four nine eight five five. To qualify for inclusion, for your comment for inclusion, Eagle must receive your written responses by March ninth, twenty twenty-four. When all acknowledged, verbal public comments have been made. We will ask if anyone else would like to make a statement. Those wishing to make a statement will be provided the opportunity as follows. When your name is called, your microphone will be unmuted, and you may begin sharing your comments, being sure to first clearly state your full name and specify any group or association with. Again, I'll reiterate that, please state your first name or your full name and specify any group that you are with. And then each speaker will be given three minutes to make their closing statement. We will indicate when you have one minute left to speak. Please begin wrapping up your comments and end within the allotted time. If need be, we will indicate when your time has ended. Eagle asks that all hearing participants remain mindful, courteous, and respectful of one another tonight. Please also recognize that Eagle staff are here tonight to provide fair and equitable opportunity for all to express their comments on the proposed project and to receive those comments. Final statement from me on how the information will be used. Again, we'd like to remind you that this hearing is public and it is being recorded. Your comments will be made part of the public record and the information Eagle considers in making permitting decisions regarding the proposed project. The public comment period for this public hearing will remain open for ten days following the date of this hearing, ending on Saturday, March ninth of twenty twenty-four. Additional information and comments submitted in writing during the final ten days of the public comment period will be considered by Eagle. Following the public comment period, Eagle will determine if a permit can be issued for the project as proposed or with modifications, or will send a letter of denial. Eagle permitting decisions can be made via, or can be viewed via my viro portal online by searching for application submission number H P Y G N eight D M four Y one Z. Thank you for your attention and for attending tonight's public hearing. We will now begin calling the names of those who have indicated they wish to make a statement.
Yeah, thank you, Hunter. Just to reiterate and add to a couple of things that Hunter just mentioned. As he mentioned, I'm going to start with the list of names who indicated during registration that they wanted to make a comment, and I have a list of ten names. I'll list the name and then whoever's going to be next after that in the order that they registered. And then we're going to go to anybody else who would like to make a comment. And if you'd like to make a comment and you didn't indicate so, you can raise your hand in Zoom. If you're on the phone, you can select pound two, which will raise your hand in Zoom. And we'll call on you in order. Everyone will have an opportunity to make a comment tonight, so we're going to stay until we get everybody's comments. It will be one comment per person to give everybody an equal opportunity. And everybody will get three minutes. As mentioned, you will see a timer on the screen if you're logged into Zoom that will count down for the three minutes. And then you'll hear a noise for a ring that will indicate you have one minute left. So if you hear this noise, it'll mean you have a minute left before your time runs out. So with that, we're going to go ahead and get started. Please list your name, and if you have any affiliation you'd like to identify, you may list that as well. And then you can begin your comment. Once we call your name, unmute you, and you can unmute yourself. So the first person I have on my list is Kathleen Heideman. So Kathleen, we are going to unmute you. And you are unmuted, and then you can unmute yourself, and you can begin your comment when you're ready.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Great. Thanks so much for allowing me to speak tonight. My name's Kathleen Heideman. I'm a resident of Marquette County and a board member of Upper Peninsula Environmental Coalition. In reviewing this permit thoroughly, I believe Tilden's alternatives analysis is inadequate because they assume their project is in the public good. They discuss economic benefits but fail to estimate the value of wetlands and streams that would be destroyed under the permit. This project is not a wetland-dependent project, and it fails to demonstrate that all of the alternatives have been investigated. The Tilden Mine Stockpile Expansion endangers wetland streams, wildlife that depends on these ecosystems, water quality, and long-term quality of life for the surrounding residents. The wetland impacts are truly massive. This mine is asking to destroy seventy-seven point nine acres of wetlands, nearly a mile of first-order streams and historic beaver ponds, and three hundred acres of wild land buried under waste rock. No serious consideration was given to the cumulative environmental impacts of this environmental debt that has been growing larger for decades. With an cumulative environmental impact so large, you can see it from the International Space Station. If you read through the Tilden Permit Application and you didn't know anything about the project area, you'd reach the conclusion that Ely Creek is an eyesore, a little logged wasteland with poor water quality and no value, or just a useless swamp. Cliffs wants the regulator to assume that all of the wetland and stream impacts are necessary and unavoidable. And they claim that no special plants or wildlife are threatened, although they didn't actually look for them. And there are no endangered or species of state concern to be harmed. The best thing to do from their purely economic point of view is bury the wetlands under a mountain of waste rock. Those who actually know the area realize that Ely Creek is a designated trout stream. Grass Lake and Tilden Pond are historic beaver ponds. The application fails to acknowledge the value of beavers as a keystone species which have been engineering this area for generations. The applicant says there is no baseline data for the project area and does not mention a book by Lewis Henry Morgan called The American Beaver and His Works, published in eighteen sixty-eight, which offers a rare baseline study of the Ely Creek and Grass Lake ecosystem, complete with maps and diagrams prior to iron mining in eighteen sixty-eight. There is an occupied eagle nest in the Tilden Mine Stockpile Expansion, and the project area is frequented by wolves. Cliffs's request to destroy wetlands and streams here is part of a larger unacknowledged pattern for too long. They have been operating, operating iron mines for a hundred and seventy-five years, but did not include the comprehensive environmental impact study in their permit.
Kathleen, your time's up, so it'd be great if you could wrap your comments up in the next couple of seconds.
Yeah, thank you for considering my comments, and I hope that you will deny this permit or ask for additional alternatives to the wetland impacts. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. All right, next up is Solomon Kronberg, and then after Solomon is Brian Noel. So Solomon, we're going to find you in the audience. It looks like you're unmuted. And you just need to unmute yourself on your end. You should see the microphone icon at the bottom of your screen to unmute yourself. All right, and then Solomon, if you're having some audio issues, what we'll do is we'll go on to the next person, and then we will come, come right back to you so that you can get your, your comment in once you get your audio issue squared away. So we're going to move on to Brian Noel, and then we'll move back to Solomon and see if they got their mic working. So Brian, you can go ahead and begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. My name's Brian Noel, speaking for the Yellow Dog Watershed Reserve here in Marquette County. Part three oh three of Michigan Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act stipulates that a proposal to impact wetlands must be assessed according to several criteria. And we want to comment on the expansion of Tilden Mine in relation to four of these. One, quote, "The availability of feasible and prudent alternatives and methods to accomplish the benefit of the activity." Unquote, "The proposal does not consider the full range of potential dump sites for rock extracted in the expansion. Although Cleveland Cliffs also owns the adjacent national mine site, areas of that parcel were not considered, nor were all potential sites on the Tilden property itself presented in the company's scenarios." Number two, quote, "The probable effects on historical, cultural, scenic, ecological, or recreational values and on the public health or fish or wildlife." Unquote, "Grass Lake, already located in the shadow of Cleveland Cliffs' dump piles and threatened by the mine expansion project, has historical significance. Studied in the mid-nineteenth century by Lewis Henry Morgan, the effects of beaver activity can still be seen there today, making this a site of both historical and ecological significance. The proposed project will also severely impact Ely Creek, designated as a cold-water trout stream. Finally, the Cleveland Cliffs proposal fails to mention the presence of bald eagle nests, as well as evidence of the gray wolf. Both are federally protected, and the bald eagle is a species of special concern in the state of Michigan." Number three, the size of the wetland being considered. The proposed area to be affected, almost seventy-eight acres, is exceedingly high by historical permitting standards. And number four, amount of remaining wetland in the general area. According to Eagle calculations, the Switzer Creek watershed has already lost forty-one percent of its wetlands to industrial development. The impact of further losses on the hydrological system and the benefits it provides to wildlife and the human community would be devastating. Under subsection four of Section three oh three of the statute, Eagle is tasked with determining whether disruption to aquatic resources is unacceptable if a permit is issued. It states, "A permit shall not be issued unless the applicant shows either of the following. A, the proposed activity is primarily dependent on being located in the wetland, and B, a feasible and prudent alternative, it does not exist." We conclude that neither has Cleveland Cliffs demonstrated that the mine waste must be dumped in the wetlands, nor have the alternatives proposed by the company addressed viable options by which this can be avoided. For these reasons, we urge you to reject the permit sought for the expansion of the Tilden Mine. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment, Brian. All right, we're going to go back to some. All right, we're going to go back to Solomon. Solomon, are you able to unmute yourself and make your comment? If you're having issues with your microphone, you can also use the call-in number and call in by phone and make your comment that way. We will also be providing the other ways to provide a comment after this part of the hearing, so you'll be able to. Make a comment that way if you'd like as well. And I should also mention, if you run out of time, those options will also be available and we'll list those. So it looks like. Yeah, Solomon still is having trouble unmuting themselves, so we're going to move on to the next person. Tom Grodtwall, it looks like there are two of you logged in, so we're going to unmute you both and whichever wants to make the statement. Are you there, Tom? Oh, I think.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Hello. My family and I moved to the Upper Peninsula a few years ago, initially planning to live in Marquette, but the prices pushed us out, so we began searching in the Ishpeming area. That was until I zoomed out on Google Satellite. The landscape looked like the skin of a plague victim. We said no thanks and moved elsewhere. As more folks like myself are pushed out of the Marquette area, we will need desirable places to live. By permitting this stockpile expansion without considering alternatives thoroughly. You would be greatly undermining the attractiveness of Ishpeming to potential residents who would otherwise be contributing meaningfully to the area's culture and economy. On another note, this morning I reviewed the document, Permits for Incidental Take of Eagles and Eagles' Nests, revised by the Fish and Wildlife Service on February twelfth of two thousand and twenty four. Regarding nest disturbance, the document specifically states, General permits for disturbance caused by mining operations are not available at this time. Operators of these activities must apply for specific permits. Is Eagle aware that contrary to what the company has stated, a nesting bald eagle has been observed and photographed in the proposed site? Note that the federal regulations refer not to a breeding pair, as Ryan Mccone has stated, but simply to an eagle's nest, even one which is abandoned and may be reused. And has the mining company acquired the necessary federal permits? Please also appreciate the symbolism of Eagle burying its own namesake, not to mention the emblem of American freedom, in a massive pile of waste. And in service to a company who is fifty million dollars delinquent on their taxes. That's the sort of story the media just might run with. Thank you.
Now, thanks for your comment, Tom. Right. Next up is Robin LaChapelle, followed by Fred Van Leuven. So Robin, we're going to unmute you. You're unmuted on our end, so you can unmute yourself and begin your comment when you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yep, yep, we can hear you.
Hi, this is Robin LaChapelle. I'm a concerned adjacent landowner. Who has been photographing the eagles in the Ely Creek area for more than fifteen years. My question tonight was how. We were going to protect the nesting bald eagles. And I wanted to tell you that on February fourth, two thousand and twenty four, I captured the eagles in the nest, which is located. At the shore of Grass Lake. The nesting pair I have followed started using this nest in two thousand and eighteen. In two thousand and sixteen, when the new power lines were placed through the Ely Creek watershed, the logging that took place for these lines directly impacted. The nest this pair was using. By two thousand and seventeen, the nest had lost its top in a spring storm. The eagle pair raised one last eagle in that nest on Ely Creek before moving to the nest. Where they're currently nesting on Grass Lake on the south shore. That is my comment. Thank you very much, and there is an active nest on that site. With pictures.
Thanks for coming. Yep, thank you, Robin. All right, so next up is Fred Van Leuven, and then Anna Bunting will be after Fred. So Fred, it looks like you are unmuted. You can begin when you're ready.
Okay, I'm Fred Van Leuven. I'm Tilden Township Supervisor. We have a wellhead protection area in that direction, and it's one part of your rock pile is covering it right now. We lie east of where the rock pile is going to be through the swamp, and we figured swamp usually cleans it out. But we need some kind of guarantees that our water system, we just got a brand new about a seven thousand, seven million dollar water system, and without wells, it's no good. So we need assurances, you know, some kind of guarantees that from CCI. That if we get leach through the swamp into our wells and they can't be. Or fixed, that CCI will get us new wells put in and the systems. And that's about our whole thing was just our wellhead protection area being run over. And other than that, we support CCI, so. Have fun. I'm done. It's good. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for coming, Fred. All right, so next up is Anna Bunting, but we're not seeing an Anna Bunting. If if you're logged in somewhere else or on the phone. Please raise your hand, Anna. If you're on the phone, select pound two. And then after Anna, Olivia Newrose. And so Olivia, looks like you're unmuted on our end. Feel free to unmute yourself and begin your comment when you're ready. And you should see the microphone icon at the bottom of your screen to unmute yourself to make your comment. And then again, if you're having, if you're having an issue, we can move on to the next person and come back to you, Olivia. If there's a microphone issue. All right. So you raise your hand, Olivia. All right, so we'll come, we'll come back to you. We'll see if you can get your microphone issue worked out. You can also use the call-in number. To call in by phone to make your comment. All right, so after Olivia, it's going to be Nicole Kiway-Bieber. And Nicole, you are unmuted.
Thank you. Can you hear me fine?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, my name's Nicole Kiway-Bieber, and I'm a tribal citizen of the Little Traverse State and the Bodawua. I think what stands out to me with this, since we can only, you know, speak in terms of the statute itself. The language that it seems like this company is taking quite a lot of license with. In terms of what you all's capacity is to protect or make sure, you know, wetlands are taken into account. The company seems to think that means they can say, oh, it's fine. We'll just somehow say. You know, that over here, it's a, we'll remove it, we'll scooch it over here instead, which just doesn't really account for the lives that are lost. The habitat that's destroyed of what it is they're actually proposing. And so for this, when these industries are given so much leeway to sort of decide the terms of. This is how we're meeting these regulations. And it sounds bad enough as it is. We need to remember that they would probably do nothing to look towards the environment and the wildlife. Unless there were these regulations in place, so I really urge you all to kind of, you know, just. Know that the public expects and respects you to understand your own expertise, your own jobs, and to just deal in facts and be bound. That this proposes to just bury under this, you know, horrifying situation that has people worried about the water. We understand it does kill wildlife. It destroys that habitat. There's really no going around that. So an alternative, maybe it's to, you know, diversify and come up with a business model that isn't predicated on destroying the environment. And, you know, all of these other ill effects, so please do just deny this permit, you know, maybe it's just time to make a new plan that isn't. You know, spoiling everything.
Yeah, thank you for your comment, Nicole. All right, we're going to go back to Olivia Newrose. Are you able to unmute yourself, Olivia? And and again, if not. You can try the call-in number, or I'll be providing the other ways to make an official comment again and can make your comment through those other methods. Right, and then, so my last person after Olivia is Charlotte Loonsfoot, but Charlotte doesn't appear to be on the line. But as our last registered person indicated they want to make a comment, we can move on to the raised hands. And then Charlotte, if you are on the line. Logged in as someone else or on the phone, you can raise your hand in Zoom and we'll take your comment. So if anybody has not made a comment yet and would like to, either on the phone or in the audience. Feel free to raise your hand in Zoom using the raised hand icon at the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in by phone. You can select the pound two on your receiver, and that will raise your hand in Zoom, and we'll call on you using the last four digits of your phone number. All right, so I have one hand so far. Jane Fitkin, we're going to unmute you. And then you can unmute yourself and begin your comment when you're ready.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
All right, my name is Jane Fitkin, representing Citizens for Safe and Clean Lake Superior. I urge you to deny Cleveland Cliffs' permit request. Seventy seven point nine acres of wetlands is extreme and would have tremendous impacts on a watershed already starved for water. I urge you to review this application with careful scrutiny. If you zoom out, you'll see that many of the environmental impacts of the Tilden Mine are also traceable to its conjoined twin, the Empire Mine. Both are owned by Cleveland Cliffs. These two mines are treated as separate entities by Cliffs, but they're directly adjacent to each other, wholly owned and operated by the same company. It is unlawful piecemealing for the Empire and Tilden Mines to receive separate permits impacting shared water resources. Without careful consideration of their shared cumulative impacts. Cliffs received a sixty six point three acre wetland permit for the Empire Mine in two thousand and nineteen and has now applied for seventy seven acre wetland permit for the Tilden. When considered together, these permits total one hundred and forty four point two acres and represent some of the largest permanent wetland losses ever permitted by Michigan. Cumulative impacts to streams from these piecemeal permits total almost seventy five hundred linear feet. Additionally, the project is clearly not wetland dependent, so alternatives not impacting wetlands should be seriously considered. Permit Application Review Criteria states that alternatives are feasible and prudent if they would result in less impact to aquatic resources and if the alternative is available and capable. After being done, of being done after considering cost, existing technology and logistics. Considering the already astronomical costs of the current chosen alternative. Options utilizing the Tilden Pit, Empire Mine Property and Upland Areas demand careful consideration as feasible alternatives. The proposed mitigation sites for this project are also inadequate. The Republic Wetlands Preserve should not be an allowed mitigation site for the Tilden and Empire Mines. Those wetlands have limited functionality because they're built on top of the old Republic Mines tailings ponds. They're also located fifteen and a half miles from the mine site in a completely different watershed. The proposed stream mitigation site thirty two miles from the impact area prompts several concerns, including that the mitigation effort seems to restore. Water resources to benefit the same landowner who damaged those resources. Cleveland Cliffs is not trustworthy. Just recently, Marquette County revealed that Cliffs had fifty million dollars in delinquent property taxes for the Empire over the past seven years. With detrimental impacts to nearby townships. They also made statements about the mineability of Empire that constitute fraud. Why continue to succumb to the will of a company who's made it clear that they don't have Marquette County's best interests at heart? It's time to stop granting every wish of the iron mines just because they're iron mines. Through Tilden and Empire, Cliffs has destroyed almost a thousand acres of wetlands and lakes and over a hundred thousand linear feet of streams. It's time to say enough is enough and follow through on your responsibility to protect Michigan's natural resources. Please deny the permit application. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment, Jane. All right, is there anybody else on the line who has not made a comment yet, but would like to make a comment? All right, all right, I just had a. Hand raised, it's now lowered. So yeah, so there we go. Julie De La Terra. Looks like you are unmuted on our end, and feel free to unmute yourself. And make your comment when you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
All right. Yes, I'm Julie De La Terra. I have an institute called the Sacred Water Sacred Land Institute, and I work with indigenous peoples all over North America. I'm from Wisconsin. We have a lot of beautiful water over here, and we have a lot of mining over here, too. And the point I want to make is that once the mine's done, it leaves a big hole in the ground. It's never beautiful again. It's never does. It's not going to produce fresh water again. It's not going to. Serve the people of the state if it's just the people of the state you're serving, but you're not, you can't, it's priceless. Once it's gone, it's gone. You can't, it will never come back. And now as the world is experiencing a time of extreme extraction from. Oil, oil companies and mining companies and all that, the places in the world that didn't let that happen or that mitigated it or. Kept their freshwater supply or thought about their citizens and kept the beautiful wild places for them. Michigan, if it would do that, would be a better state than any than other states that allow them to be themselves to be over extracted because. Your richness is in your beauty and your wildlife and your clean water. It's not in a hole in the ground from a mining company, so. If you were smart about the future of Michigan and what it takes to be a beautiful progressive state. You'd think twice about allowing this company, which I've been listening to in the last hour. Doesn't seem like it's that great of a company to begin with, to destroy any more of your beautiful land. That's my comment for now. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Right, and then Mary Hanson, it looks like your hand is raised. You're unmuted. Feel free to begin your comment when you're ready.
Hi, I am Mary Hanson. I live in Pestigo, Wisconsin. Up in this area, we are fighting a metallic sulfide mine. It's hundred and fifty yards from the Menominee Riverbank. And yeah, this whole thing with always giving the permits out and. And not listening to the public. This is, this is just not right. I keep thinking of the saying that everybody uses, all the water protectors say water is life. Well, it isn't just a saying. It is the truth, and it's also a warning. Without that, we have no life. And kids coming up, the next seven generations, we have to fight to stop this, no matter where it is. We have to protect our water, so I am, my heart is full for what you're, what you're going through right now. And we are fighting to stop it, so we don't have to go through it. So that's about all I have to say.
Thanks for your comment, Mary.
You're welcome.
Anybody else on the line who has not made a comment yet and would like to make a comment? Again, just raise your hand in Zoom, hit hitting the raised hand icon or select pound two if you're calling in by phone. And that will raise your hand as well. If we don't have any additional raised hands, what we're going to do is we're going to go through those other ways to make a comment. And then we'll also provide Hunter's contact information for any follow-up questions or if you need to contact Hunter. All right, any other raised hands going once, going twice? I'm not seeing anyone, so we're going to go ahead and close this part out. So Hunter, would you please read the closing statement for us tonight?
Sure thing. Thank you so much, everyone, for your comments and participation. We truly do appreciate your interest in the proposed project. And for your participation in tonight's public hearing, we sincerely appreciate it. As was indicated at the beginning of this hearing, you can submit additional written comments to Eagle. From now until Saturday, March ninth, two thousand and twenty four. Following the close of this public comment, or yeah, this public hearing period. Eagle will consider, excuse me, let me step back. Following the close of the public comment period. Eagle will consider all comments received and make a permitting decision about the proposed project based on the relevant statutory criteria and requirements. The hearing is now closed. Thank you again and have a pleasant evening.
All right, thank you, Hunter. We have those other ways to submit an official comment up here. Through MindViro under submission. H P Y G N eight D M. HPYGN eight DM four Y one Z. Through MineViro or by mail to Hunter King at the Eagle Marquette District Office, one five zero four West Washington Street, uh, in Marquette, Michigan, four nine eight five five. And as Hunter mentioned, comment period after the public hearing will be open for ten days, which is March ninth. And then I saw Kyle, you turned your camera on. Did you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, there was some confusion, I think, before the hearing started about the availability of a couple of documents. So I was gonna have Ann come on and try and clear, clear that up for the folks who are still with us.
Sure, I just wanted to address Noah was asking about, um, the availability of an older impact assessment, and I think there was some confusion about the current cumulative impacts document, which is available in MineViro as part of this application. Um, but there is a document from the year two thousand that was done at that time that looked at an impact assessment for these two mines. That document contains some, um, protected location information on rare species and archaeological resources, and so it is not publicly available. It's also not been submitted as part of this application. It is a piece of information that we have in the department from the previous reviews, um, but it is not in MineViro. It would have to be requested through the FOIA process, and some information, that sensitive location information would have to be redacted.
All right, thank you for the additional information and clarification.
I'll kind of piggyback on that, that there was an additional cultural and threat and endangered species. Uh, extensive literature review, uh, provided with this application as well, that was not part of the public comment, or the public notice, uh, nor as a part of the public, uh, hearing documents due to what Ann had just mentioned, uh, with the location and sensitivity of those cultural resources, with the exact, you know, pinpoint locations not being available to the general public. So that was available and is available to us. And again, as Ann said, going through a FOIA process would be the best way to get those, those documents and that information.
All right, yeah, thanks for that additional info on that point, Hunter and everyone else on the line. Uh, last thing that I have is who to contact for further questions, as mentioned, I'm providing Hunter's contact info. Uh, his phone number is nine zero six two three five four five three seven. And again, that's nine zero six two three five four five three seven. Or you can email hunter@kingh, that's K-I-N-G-H at michigan.gov, M-I-C-H-I-G-A-N. So K-I-N-G-H at M-I-C-H-I-G-A-N dot gov. All right, and then I just wanna see if there's any final comments, uh, that you have for us, uh, Ryan or Kyle.
Yeah, I'd like to, um, thank everybody who took their time tonight to participate in this, whether you just listened in out of curiosity, or you shared your, your comments and concerns. We do appreciate it. We do take them, you know, into consideration, um, in alignment with the statutes. And, uh, so with that, I just want to, um, like I said, express our sincere appreciation for everybody, uh, and their interest and involvement in this.
Yeah, thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Hunter. Everyone else on our panel, everyone on the line for participating in this process. Last thing I have, the last, last thing I have is, uh, to remind you that this was recorded, and a closed caption recording will be on Eagle's YouTube channel in a couple of days, uh, so you can re-watch it, uh, if you so choose. And I hope you all have a great rest of your evening. Thank you.